Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's meeting?
You spoke.
Okay. Now, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from the September 10th council meeting. Approval of the September 21st payroll of $144,246.87. Approval of the USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975. Approval of the co-bank interim financing debt in the amount of $6,327.12. We have acceptance of the Wayfinding Commission minutes, the Library Board minutes, and approval of claims in the amount of $2,422,423.2, of which we have the large claims of ICAP of $228,996.24, Jefferson County Treasurer of $213,708.69, and PKG contracting $1,881,291.56. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items, counsel?
I do have a question about the Jefferson County Treasurer amount. What that's for?
If I remember right, looking through the claims, that was for some of the road work.
Share.
There was...
Oh, the share.
Yeah, the share that we're paying.
$227.
Thank you. Because I've never seen that before, and I thought we didn't pay property tax. But that's paid to them.
We're usually getting paid by them.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
It's usually coming the other way. All right, any other questions, counsel? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, on our public appearances, we have Paul Gandy... Paul, I'm sorry. Paul Glossop. Paul Gandy is here. Paul Glossop wishes to address the counsel. Paul.
Thanks for the opportunity to address. I just wanted to inform counsel of the presence of invasive noxious weeds on Bonnefield Lake and Pleasant Lake. I was passing by Bonnefield Lake in late May, and I noticed a big patch of weed. And I thought it didn't look good, because having lived here for 10 years, I've never seen big patches of weed on the lake. So I took a sample, found out that it's called curly leaf pond weed, which is an Asian invasive, and that other towns in Iowa have had problems with it. And I just wanted to suggest that the city address it before it multiplies, because it multiplies, tends to multiply much more. Let's say it multiplies at 30% increase per year. The budget of the city might only go up 3% a year. Just guessing. But you'd want to, I think, address it by simple means before it gets very thick. In this... If you go to the lake vegetation link there, you'll see a newspaper article from the Des Moines Register from last year talking about Lake Okoboji, which has a really big problem with this very same weed. And it's so thick that they... That's a picture that I took in May or early June of the weed, and that's definitely that curly leaf weed. So we have it the same as Lake Okoboji, but I don't want it to overtake our lake, the same as it's overtaken their lake. And the people who live around that lake are suggesting that it's reducing property values. The mayor of one of the towns around the lake says that part of the lake looks like the surface of a golf course. So that weed is in Bonnefield Lake, Pleasant Lake, which I also happen to live on. I've been monitoring. And so far, I haven't found that same weed, but I have found other weeds. So I'm suggesting that with warming Iowa, whatever it's caused by, these weed problems are going to affect our recreational lakes. And if they're addressed early, they can be addressed inexpensively. And I've been looking into means of addressing them, just to some degree. I'm not an expert more than anybody else. Has anybody read the article that I submitted with the request to be heard?
No.
I didn't read through.
I think it's after this. If you go down, you'll see worried-looking mayor. "Monster weed is invading the Iowa Great Lakes, and no one is sure how to stop it." Well, it is exactly the same weed we have. They're addressing it with mechanical means, to some extent, cutting swathes through it so the boats can get through. And I read, roughly speaking, that they can spend $80,000 a year just on that special weed heating or weed-removing machine. But I think it could be done by volunteers with a little bit of equipment, very inexpensively, and we'd nip it in the bud, as it were. So that's it. Does anybody have any questions that I might be able to answer?
Thanks, Paul. I know our city administrator did talk to the DNR. Do you want to report to counsel about what you found?
Yeah, the DNR reported back to us, or actually, I contacted them last spring, and they didn't get back to us. But then Melanie contacted them again here in the last couple of days. The biologist up there, up at... What's the lake up here, north of town? Darling Lake. Lake Darling, thank you. And said that in the fall, it usually dies off because of the hot water from the summer, and then it comes back in the spring. It's about... It goes out from the shoreline to about eight feet or more-ish in depth. So depending on how clear the water is, that's about how all the further it gets. They said he would come back, he would come check our lakes here in the spring. If there's... If there is that, then he would start talking to us about what we have to do to take care of it. And then there's sides that we need to post to, if that's also... If it's also found here to be here. So we'll address it at that point.
I believe there are a few ways to address it. One is chemical means, which people around here would possibly be sensitive to. But it can also be addressed mechanically. I think when there's low volumes of it, you can use what's called seining nets, S-E-I-N-E. And you can pull those between two boats, and essentially, it's like catching fish in a net, but you're catching weed, and then you bring it to the shore and take it out and dispose of it.
And it doesn't go back, or...
Well, I think, once it's in the lake, it's probably difficult to get rid of completely. I just came back from a vacation in Maine, where I was on a very large lake, about six miles long. You know, Maine has thousands of lakes, maybe a couple of thousand. I was on the Belgrade Lakes, staying on a small island. And when we left shore from the marina, there were inspectors there looking at the hulls of each, every boat, to make sure that the boats weren't transporting weeds or fractions of weeds from wherever they'd been before into the lake. It's become a very serious problem. And they delayed addressing it. Didn't realize how fast the weed would grow. And apparently, there are some lakes up there that are totally unusable for recreation. They're completely covered over with invasive weeds of different kinds. So I wouldn't want that to happen in Iowa, particularly to us, because it's part of our attraction, those nice lakes we have.
Thank you, Paul. I think we'll get a report when the DNR specialist is able to visit us and make a recommendation. And then we can make some decisions. We can have possibly the environmental committee look into that to see how we can... And I'm sure, you know, we've had good luck with volunteers in the community helping with these types of situations. So let's see what we need to mobilize once we learn a little bit more. Thanks for bringing it to our attention, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, next, counsel, we'll move to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The first is, we have a change order to propose, and I believe Alex is going to run us through that.
Evening, everyone. So tonight, we have Change Order 6 for the wastewater treatment plant improvements, Mid-Package 1 project. So just to summarize this change, approximately six weeks ago, around the beginning of August, the contractor had started the excavation for oxidation ditch number three toward the southeast side of the wastewater plant where the old polishing pond was. They were getting near to the elevation of the base slab of the ditch, and they found this kind of sandy, spongy soil that was heaving under groundwater and just natural rain events. As a result, we didn't think that it was a very good soil to build the foundation of the big structure on. So we had the contractor get their geotechnical engineer, I guess the third-party independent engineer out there to give a recommendation. They tested the soil, found that the soil didn't have enough bearing capacity or strength in order to adequately support the foundation. So they recommended overexcavation and backfill with different types of rock to provide the capacity needed. We had our own geotechnical engineer out there who came to the same conclusion. So to move that forward, because we weren't really sure how much soil needed to be removed at the time, we signed Work Change Directive Number 1. That authorized the contractor to remove what we thought was going to be about $43,000 worth of unsuitable soil, largely in oxidation number three. And they went ahead and did that based on that authorization. And after we had... After they'd finished the work, we surveyed it to determine how much quantity had actually physically been removed. And then we took a bunch of rock tickets to quantify how much rock was put back, resulting in a contract increased price of $36,442.71, which was a little bit less than we anticipated at the beginning of it. Now, we have the bearing capacity we need. The contractor has kind of backfilled the rest of the site where there were some suitable soils and is ready to pour concrete. This change order basically just approves us, approves that work, and allows them to get paid for the work that they've already done.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Any questions, counsel? And this is... We're still well within our contingency fees for the total budget for the project, so...
Yes. If we want to get into that, I can get into that now, or we can talk about that later. Up to you guys. I'm happy to go through it now.
Go ahead.
Okay. So with this change, we would still be, according to my total, $589,246 under what the original USDA letter of conditions was. That doesn't tap the additional $1,025,000 of contingencies that were set aside within that number.
Okay.
So there's still, if you add that, do that math, a little over $1.6 million still available in contingency funds based on the letter of conditions that was signed last July.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that context. So, counsel, with this recommendation, I entertain a motion to approve the Change Order Number 6.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Alex. Counsel, next, we have three public hearings to set around the development of North Campus Village. The first one will be the consideration of the final plat. We'll set this meeting for October 8th, our next scheduled council meeting. So entertain a motion to set the public hearing for final plat for North Campus Village.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. We'll move to a public hearing to rezone North Campus Village Phases 5 and 6. That will also be set for October 8th, our next scheduled council meeting. Motion.
So moved.
Second by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, we set a public hearing for the consideration of a planned unit development for North Campus Village. Again, that'll be set October 8th at our next scheduled meeting. Entertain a motion. Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Counsel, we'll move to a public hearing on the matter of leasing agricultural land adjacent to the Fairfield Municipal Airport. We will consider the lease after opening the public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing, ask if there's anyone who would like to comment on the lease. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. And there is a resolution to consider the lease for the cropland adjacent. Is there, Aaron, is there something you want to speak to in terms of what the council is approving at this time?
The lease is actually just an extenuating, continuation of what the actual airport lease is. As of right now, the current farmer is actually extending his lease, paying the same amount per acre that I don't remember off the top of my head. It's actually a pretty good deal for the airport, so.
It's just going to be $33,000, I think.
Right.
So it's a good extension.
$405,000.
Well, that's correct, the total, notice. Over $33,000.
So it's a good deal for the airport.
Okay. Does any questions regarding the extended lease? Not entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion passes. Next, counsel, we have a resolution for the approval of our street finance report that is basically sent to the state of Iowa for... This is basically a summary of our road use tax revenues and expenditures. And if you've seen the report, balanced on both sides, and Rebecca needs to get that in by the end of the week, so.
No pressure.
Is there any questions for Rebecca at this time about the report?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Anderson to approve the city street financial report.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we'll move down to our committee and board reports. Water and Sewer Utilities Committee?
Yes. This is kind of a report that should have been given at an earlier council meeting. But Water and Sewer Committee met on the 31st of August, and there were two requests that we considered. One was from an owner regarding a large water bill that occurred because of an underground water break that created this bill. It was not determined for some time. There was no connection to the sewer, so it's strictly a case of water only. And notification did occur, but the bill amount was $1,375.50. And I guess I would just say, the committee at this point is denying this request to make any adjustment for the bill. So I guess I would like to move that it be approved in that manner.
Okay, recommendation from the committee chair to deny the request to refund the amount of $1,375.50. Is there a second? Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you, Martha. And a second request?
The second request was from an individual who was a renter. And there was a water softener that was obviously stuck on backwash for a month. And the residents were out of town and not aware of the problem until they received the bill. And since that time, the machine has been strictly, you know, removed, so it won't happen again. But this does involve water and sewer both. And the amount of this bill was $879.8. And again, the committee would recommend that this be denied, because we feel it is the responsibility of someone to be in the home when this occurs.
Okay. Thank you, Martha. And just to clarify what you had said in the first denial, was it that generally, we can look at this in terms of the sewer that was...
Right.
...that was processed? But in first case, it was not. In this case...
It went down there.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
So we would...
So our expenses for producing and moving that water and also for processing it.
Right. Because of the fact that it did involve both water and sewer, was the second request.
I'm a little confused. Is it $469 or $879?
Pardon?
Is it $469 that they requested, or was it $879 that they requested?
Yes.
The $879 was the amount that's being denied.
The total, yes, for the total amount.
Okay. So entertain a motion to approve the denied request.
Thank you.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Yes.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you, Martha. Anything else to report from the committee? Okay. And we'll move to our city administrator and department reports. Melanie, you're up first.
Good evening. Still a busy time of year for the construction. A couple of them that I would like to point out to you guys. The Adams Avenue reconstruction has started. They started removing concrete today. All of the utility poles are already out of the way. That is why we had about a week delay in there. But those are all moved, and we look forward to that one going smoothly and quickly before the end of the construction season wraps up. South Court Street, which is the project with neighborhood builders and developers, the wet couple... The wet weeks we had, or the wet week we had a couple of weeks ago, caused a lot of problems for the site. The contractor actually had the trench, the sewer trench collapsing quite a bit on them. No one was hurt, but it just has caused a lot of slow... Aaron has been talking with neighborhood builders and developers, keeping them up to date on the schedule. And so far, they're still understanding that it won't be done by the development date, but they're impressed with how often the contractors out there... They've said the contractor's been out there on Saturdays, so they understand the city and the contractor is doing everything we can to get this project done as quickly as possible, despite setbacks with the weather. 227th Street, as well as the Highway 1 turn lane, is almost complete. They've got shoulders and pavement markings pretty much left. And then that project will be done, which is the Jefferson County Treasurer payment. Right now, we are splitting the costs with the county, and at the end of the project, we will request reimbursement for a significant portion of that. The alleys' progress is being made. Looks like they'll be fully opened in a couple of weeks. All the major pours... The last major pour was today, and so I've noticed they've kind of doing some shouldering on it, and so that's what they have left. There may be a time where the utility drop box is closed, and we will get that information out to the public if that happens. We'll wait till our billing systems work and all up and running before we close that town. And then, let's see. On as far as the future projects, I wanted to point out that our architect that we had hired is... Or that we had started a contract with is no longer interested in the project. The project sat both here at City Hall and with USDA for quite a while. So she actually had not started any work, and whether it was her schedule or one reason or another, she's not interested at this time. So we'll be talking to a few other architects who are familiar with this area that we've worked with before, to see if they're interested in that project. And then, right before the meeting, Councilmember Hallie asked me about two projects. First, on Sixth Street between Adams and Jefferson, I'm sure you've all seen or hit the gravel patch. That is actually going to be poured on Wednesday. That's... I just sent out the press release that that will be closed Wednesday morning, closed through Friday afternoon. And crews getting the concrete back there. We had a sewer main collapse right in that area, which is sewer main collapse right before school started. And so it was a little bit of a rush job to get that repaired, and just took a little bit longer to get the concrete done. The last one was Petras Place, the pocket park that is going near the Civic Center. I corresponded with the architect there a couple of weeks ago. He's a little bit behind, he admits, and because ideally, they were going to be bidding this in September with work starting soon. And they do not have all of the contracts for that let, so he does not have a start date. But they are still moving forward on that project.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate that. Any questions regarding our project update?
Quick question. Has anyone been out to see how the overflow's doing at Walton now that we've had it's done and there's been significant amounts of rain? I know the crews were out there today. We're actually doing an inspection with the DNR tomorrow. But I have not heard anything from the guys that have been out there.
Do you mean how is the water level?
Mm-hmm. Well, that, and how's the work holding up?
It has been going up as far as the water level. How is the construction holding up? I would assume it's going fine. We're going to get an inspector tomorrow, so hopefully, it'll be all good.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate that. Next, ask our chief of police to announce our... Sorry, chief. Our date for trick-or-treating.
I was hoping you were calling him up. Yes, we... Like many good decisions I make, it actually was made by the city clerk. I went along with the decision of the city clerk, because it's never got to me in trouble in the past. But we picked, mostly her, Tuesday, October 30th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay. Counsel, then entertain a motion to set Tuesday, October 30th, trick-or-treat night in Fairfield from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m.
Move to agree with Rebecca.
I second.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Turn and red.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, do you have more of an update for...
Not unless you guys want one. I'm here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you the quick update.
Okay.
It says it up there on that agenda, so.
Okay.
Yeah, things have been moving along pretty quickly this summer at the wastewater plant. I know the city's been doing a great job of kind of updating everyone with the social media posts. You've been probably seeing a lot of pictures out there about what's been going on. Last week, or last week, the contractor started to kind of pick up. Previous to that, obviously, we had a lot of wet weather. That slowed things down a little bit. But they poured a lot of concrete at the IP building and the Headworks building, and have started a lot of masonry work as well. I think the oxidation ditch floor building is now done, or mostly done, masonry-wise. And the control building is getting pretty close as well. The next couple of weeks, I think, is going to be largely focused on oxidation ditch number three. That's an 160-foot diameter structure. There's going to be a lot of concrete being poured there. And then I've also started the foundation of aerobic digester number two. So there's just a lot of work going on, and I expect the contractor's going to remain very busy throughout the end of the year. I think they're... As far as we know, they're on track to get what they want to get done yet this year, which is good, which means they'll probably be working inside some of those buildings over the winter. So that's kind of the update on Mid-Package 1. Mid-Package 2 is very, very close to substantial completion. We've kind of had some issues trying to get the contractor to finish up a few punch list items that need to be done prior to bringing substantial completion. You guys were hopeful to get that done here in the next couple of weeks. We had the sluice gates not pass the leakage test last week, so they've made some modifications, apparently, over the weekend and maybe today. And they're hopeful to retest those this week. We'll keep you posted. Assuming we get that done, a few other tiny items, I would like to bring substantial completion yet, I guess in October, if possible. But like I said, I'll keep you updated.
Great. Thank you. Other questions, or?
No, I saw some pretty good pictures on Facebook of plant work. There's a lot of stuff going on out there, and it looks way different than it did before. It's pretty good.
I think the contractor's a lot happier now that 227th Street is open.
Oh, yeah.
And the detour is now done, so, yeah, it's coming along. We'll keep you guys posted.
Yeah, what Darren's trying to say is it's starting to look like $25 million.
Exactly. It's starting to look like it's money well spent.
Yep. There you go.
That's what it's actually looking like.
All right. Thanks for your update. We appreciate you coming down, Alex.
Thanks a lot today.
Okay, next, our city administrator, Aaron.
Two weeks ago, Paul Gandy and I went to the Iowa League of Cities. Some of the interesting things that Paul and I were able to go to is we went to a succession planning training, which talked about the hiring process, obviously succession planning. One of the things I got to go to was a nuisance abatement workshop where we talked about business nuisances and property management standards that help clean up current buildings that may have had fires, or rental buildings that just aren't staying up to date. Business nuisances pointed us in the direction of Iowa City's code, which is a very good code for that. Talked about financing projects in tight budgets, specifically the fire department, like funding through fundraising or bonding with capital, combining capital improvements with fire department stuff. Those are kind of the highlights that I had. Do you have any other ones?
Yeah, I want to thank the city for making this possible. We got a chance to meet a lot of people, talk with some of them, and make some connections to the few of them, connections that I think are going to be beneficial to the city. And for first timer, first time, first-termer city council person, it was an eye-opening experience. A lot of people around the state who have challenges, issues, and a lot of the things we talk about here and things we face are not unusual. They're not different. And there are people out there who've come across some of the same problems and challenges and succeeded, city councils and mayors and administrators and so forth. And we got a chance to meet some of those folks, and so I think it's going to be a benefit to the city in the year, and thanks a lot.
Thanks, Paul.
Last week, Monday, or this, yeah, week ago Monday, I went to the Great Places Annual Meeting where they awarded renewals for the Great Places awards that they do through the state. That's a pretty good designation. There's grant funding available because you're designated as a Great Places designation. That was interesting and got to learn a few things at that. Had a meeting with Alliant, it was actually a phone conversation about the downtown lighting project, which we promptly turned around and said, no, that's not what we wanted. We wanted something different, and so now we're kind of waiting again for, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Is this still on our inventory? We're still trying to get our inventory down there?
No.
You got that?
No, it's more designs.
It's them coming back with stuff.
Okay.
We had talked to them about what we wanted, then they came back with a whole bunch of different things. If I remember right, our budget was less than a million dollars for this whole project. The budget they sent us here for three different options was like $2.5 million.
But they, yeah, I wasn't able to participate in the phone call on Friday, but the last time we had met, which is probably seven or eight months ago, you know, we basically said we'd like to look at a more of a designer option for one of the, as a sample for some of the posts, because we may want to continue some of the work that we did in the downtown where we left West Broadway, East Broadway, and North Court alone. We didn't replace those lights. So if we would, at least wanted to look at the option of adding some more of the decorative style lights, whereas the others would be more of a utility look, but we wanted to match the colors of the poles. They basically came back to us with just the design option to replace all of the poles. And I don't know how that got confused, but we'll try and get that straightened out. So anyway, that's.
So that's the downtown lighting project. Melanie and I and John addressed some easement issues with some property owners on Libertyville Road sewer project, which I think we're going to get that one done without having to worry about condemnation. Is it step one that the other one is? The sewer plant, or the sewer pipe through the field? And we addressed some issues with the farmer on the step one pipe going through his pastures, and I think we've got that resolved pretty amicably. So we got those done last week. And then last but not least, we had a computer virus that shut our entire computer system down last week. It's been a struggle to get through, but we are starting, are we starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel?
I hope so.
Yeah, we're getting close.
Well, we got our email service back over the weekend, which was, yeah.
So we're getting there. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks for your report, Aaron. At this point, council, if there's any other business, we do need to go into closed session, and that would be for two purposes.